Call the meeting of the City Council for March 10th, 2009 to order. Do we have the roll call, please?
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Okay, do we have a closed session report from the City Attorney this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The closed session items have been listed on the open session agenda and they are fully listed pursuant to their Brown Act categories. No reportable action was taken on any one of them with the exception of conference with legal counsel to regarding anticipated, excuse me, B to conference with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation, anticipation of filing and initiation of litigation, and that is the potential initiation of litigation against the County of Orange for allegedly charging the C property tax administration fees in excess of those permitted by the Revenue and Taxation Code. The council voted unanimously to authorize the Office of the City Attorney to file a claim against the county and pursue its tolling agreement and then bring back to the council the actions of the county with respect to that matter. As to further matters too, and for the benefit of the public, the council authorized us to send abatement letters to 11 different former or currently operating group home operators that have been identified as not fulfilling the requirements for abatement up to February 22nd. The Office of the City Attorney sent those letters out on the 27th of February. We have five facilities that have confirmed non-operation and we are bringing back to the council in two weeks whether or not to get off the authority to file nuisance abatement proceedings against the remaining facilities that have not stopped, ceased operating, and we will report out what the decision is at that time on the 24th. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Would you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember Rozansky, followed by the invocation by the Reverend Peter D. Haynes?
Please join me in the pledge to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do invite you to be in prayer.
Wondrous God, Fountain of Life and Source of Goodness, you have made all that is and given us all we have. We are grateful and thank you for the people of this beautiful place and for able, responsible leaders in the mutual regard which forms our civic life. Give us, we pray, your Spirit of peace, justice, charity, wisdom, humor, and grace that we may find with one another the fulfillment of our humanity here in this lovely city. For you are gracious, great lover of souls, and to you we give glory and honor now and
Thank you, Reverend. Okay, we have no presentations tonight, so Madam Clerk?
Notice to the public, the city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the council. Speakers must limit comments to five minutes on agenda items. The council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cellphones and pagers off or set them in the silent mode. Now is the time for city council announcements or matters which council members would like placed on a future agenda for discussion, action, or report.
Okay, Councilwoman Daigle.
Yes, I wanted to provide an update to our community on some of our Bay issues. And I recently represented the city in Washington DC along with our Assistant City Manager to visit with our congressmen, and we found tremendous support to help complete the upper back Bay in the amount of $13.1 million. And the city anticipates that there will be decision on that funding in about three weeks. We also discussed the lower Bay dredging. That particular project is not shovel-ready, and so our Bay Issue Committee, which also consists of Councilwoman Gardner and Mayor and myself, we met with the Corps of Engineers and we're looking at a joint planning process. And so we really believe it's to the advantage of the city to take advantage of the Corps' tremendous expertise in engineering and permitting. We also, and the amount of funding for the harbor would be $15 million, we also had a discussion of the Newport Slough, which we have kind of since now calling a marsh. That was a name that was a little better received by the federal folks, and the amount of money that we're seeking there is $1.9 million. And we found our congressional representatives to be very supportive of that, but we do have to work out, work within the Corps budgets. So I wanted everyone to know that the council's working very hard at these issues, and in terms of some direction forward, we're going to continue to educate agencies and federal elected officials on the needs of our community. We're going to be pursuing state and federal funding along those lines, and then we're also going to be involved with this joint planning process with the Corps. And then finally, we'll be implementing our council priority. It does appear with the lower Bay that it will require a local cost share, and so we'll be looking to work in that direction too. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gardner?
Yes, we had Waterwise, which was a wonderfully attended program at the library on how to be, how to save water, how to make your garden more drought effective. And I know that there was filming of it by the city, and it will probably be on our local channel, but I'm also wondering, have we considered making DVDs available for people? Just something to think about. Secondly, a few weeks ago, I asked about solicitations and whether we were the masters of our fate, and thank you, Mr. City Attorney, for getting back to me. And I understand that as far as commercial speech is concerned, we do have some ways that we can shorten the hours if we desire. And I had one of the neighborhood watch teams in my area ask that we consider this, and I know the City Attorney's Office is very busy, staff is busy, and I don't know that this is a major priority, but I wanted to get a sense of the council if they would agree to coming back with at some point a provision that looked at shortening the hours for commercial solicitation. I think that the solicitors are getting more and more aggressive, and with our declining economy, it could be much more of an issue.
What are the hours now?
Until nine.
Oh, I'd be in favor of that, then.
Okay, thank you. And one more thing, just in general to the public, we got an email, I think it was last week, calling us all scum, and I'm sure that's, this person was not the only person that did it, but if you would simply sign it, you know, I'll be glad to engage in dialogue with anyone, but I'm not going to engage in dialogue with anonymous emails. So just sign it, I'm not going to yell at you, I don't think anybody else would, but put a name to it and we'll talk about why we are not scum. Thanks.
Councilwoman Webb?
I don't know how I quite follow that one, but I just want you to recognize that in a week we have a celebration called the Wearing of the Green or St. Patrick's Day, so I wish everybody will go out and responsibly help celebrate that holiday, not holiday, but celebration. I'd like to welcome Troop 746 who are here to satisfy one of the requirements in both the Communication Merit Badge and the Citizenship of the Community Merit Badge. Welcome. I hope that we have a nice short meeting for you to get through and many issues that you can pick up on. And thirdly, I've been approached by the Mariners Mile Business Association to, they call it, reinstitute the funding for the beautification and improvement of the area in the Mariners' Mile between Riverside and Tustin. What they have in mind is trying to reinstitute something that was budgeted in about 2002 and 2003, in which the first phase was completed, and that was the installation of palm trees along Coast Highway. And the second phase was put off primarily because they were looking at the Assessment District for undergrounding the utilities within the area, and they didn't feel that you could accomplish very much with utilities still above ground. They have now put out well over a million dollars of their own funding through the Assessment District and now would like to have us consider putting together a conceptual plan, help them put together a conceptual plan for what can be done to spiff up the area a little bit. And they mainly have in consideration the intersections of Avon Street and both Riverside and Tustin. It looks like that what they might do would also help on some of the neighborhood calming issues, and so I would like to see if we could get the staff to come back with some sort of proposal or something for the council to consider, to look at, something to be funding with the neighborhood calming funds to look at the improvement of the Mariners' Mile area.
Thank you. Councilman Hen?
I do have a few announcements tonight. We have just recently hosted another e-waste collection event. It's a combination of our General Services Department and Goodwill of Orange County. It was held at Mariner School, Elementary School, and we succeeded in collecting 61,000 pounds of e-waste, including, I'm guessing, about six pounds of mine, through an old laptop and an old cellphone. And in any event, that was 7,000 more than was held in the last one. I think we've had three of these now. We've collected almost 200,000 pounds of e-waste in these collection events, and it's just amazing to me how successful they've been. I think it's just a great tribute to the citizens of Newport Beach who are concerned about this kind of thing and getting rid of their e-waste in the right way. This e-waste is either recycled or properly disposed of, and some of it may even be sold by Goodwill to good use for the community. And so it's just a great thing. I would encourage everyone to participate in these. It's really easy to do, and basically you almost, you don't even have to hardly stop your car. You just drive by, hand it off, they hand you a receipt, you're done. The next one will be in October, so I encourage everyone to participate now that I have. The next thing is that, one of the things that popped up in our citizen's survey a year ago, despite the fact that our community is about a 99% happy place and well-thought-of place to live by our residents, we do seem to have fallen down a little bit on some code enforcement issues, particularly as it relates to property maintenance, exterior maintenance, and that sort of thing. And so your city council has made it clear that stepped-up code enforcement in some of these areas is important, and we really have stepped up code enforcement. We issued quite a few more citations this year, probably almost 50% more than a year ago. And a lot of these are going for a particular program to make sure we have clean and safe alleys with trash, and also maintenance of property with painting and other upgrades, weed abatement, and that sort of thing. Some of it has also come for improved water quality and spill enforcement and that sort of thing. So the point of all of this effort is not to issue a lot of citations or get a lot of fees for the city. The point of this effort is to raise the quality of life for all of our residents by helping those that aren't quite so observant about our city's quality of life do a better job with that. And we're having a lot of success, and I commends code enforcement for their diligent support of this. It's not an easy job because they do meet with opposition from time to time, and I think they're doing a great job with it. Next, we do have a significant project that is beginning this week. I saw the equipment out there this morning when I ran by. We're going to be relocating a bunch of sand on West Newport. We're going to be taking it from the far west end by the River Jetty and moving it down to the area between 28th and 48th Streets to widen that beach and provide better sea and storm protection for the houses down in that area of the peninsula. So if you see a lot of equipment moving back and forth and part of the beach fenced off, stay out of the way and wait a little while. It'll be done, I think, by the end of April, Steve, something like that, or Mark? Middle of April, okay. And the only downside is they're going to start at 7:00 AM, and they'll be done by 5:00 or 6:00, I guess, but it's for a very good purpose and it won't take too long. And then lastly, I have the distinct honor of taking over responsibility for the council critters this year. At the behest of our mayor, I have volunteered for that job. And for those of you that don't know, City of Newport Beach has been a very strong supporter of Relay for Life, which is the annual American Cancer Society event. It's the main fundraiser for American Cancer Society every year, and the council is anxious to show its support. I am anxious to do that on behalf of council. I'm hoping for some support from my other council members along the way in that respect, and I have some ideas for that that I'll be sharing at a later date. But in any event, the Relay for Life event itself, which is basically a walkathon, a 24-hour walkathon to raise money for the American Cancer Society, it takes place on May 16th and 17th at Newport Harbor High School. And so I'm very hopeful that we'll see all of our council members and a lot of our citizens out there participating and hopefully also giving to the American Cancer Society. It's a great, great charity to support. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Rozansky?
Nothing, thank you.
Mayor Protem Curry?
Well, I would like to congratulate the folks at Hoag and at the Newport Beach Country Club for another successful Toshiba Golf Tournament. This tournament, which enjoyed great weather and great participation, actually is the largest fundraiser on the Senior Champions Tour in terms of money raised for local charities. And it certainly showed off our community very, very well. It was great to go home and watch a little bit of the city on television, albeit you could hear the jet noise in the background, but it really is a great event for Newport and for everybody who participated in it, and congratulations to Eduardo Romero, who was this year's Champions winner by one stroke. And also, we'll talk more about this because I see in the audience we have an item on the agenda, but it's with great pride that I would invite everybody to the groundbreaking for the New Oasis on March 24th at 2:30. And we'll talk more about that as we get into the agenda tonight, but that is certainly going to be an event for celebration in the community that we're all going to want to be very proud of. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have one brief announcement, that is that Councilmember Hen and I had the pleasure of seeing off the start of the Newport Beach to Cabo Yacht Race over the weekend, and it was exciting to be out there and seeing all these beautiful boats take off. There was one part of the race that started on Friday, and then another, or two other groups of boats that started on Friday, then the two other groups that we saw started on Saturday, and it was really exciting. And who won that again? Councilwoman Hen?
Stark Raving Mad Four won. It's a boat owned and captained by Jim Madden, who is a resident of Newport Beach and a member of the Newport Harbor Yacht Club. First in fleet, first in class.
Congratulations to him. Okay, Madam Clerk?
Consent Calendar. All matters listed under Consent Calendar, items 1 through 11, are considered by the council to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. The city council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the council staff or the public request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Members of the public who wish to discuss the consent calendar item should come forward to the lectern upon invitation by the mayor and state their name and item number. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium.
Okay, Councilman Hen?
Let's see, I did. Item number eight.
Eight, yeah.
Okay. Councilman Rozansky?
Nothing, thank you.
Mayor Protem Curry?
No items?
Councilwoman Daigle?
None.
Councilwoman Gardner?
Nine and 10.
Okay. I have none. Staff?
None. As far as consent calendar items are concerned, but I just want to give a notice, anyone interested in item number 18, formation of an ad hoc committee for negotiating the connection and code company development agreements, I'm going to ask that item be polled, and we will bring it back at a further date.
Okay. Does anyone from the public wish to pull any item from the consent calendar? Please step forward. Okay, seeing no one, I'll bring it back for motion.
Move that we adopt the consent calendar items 1 through 11 with the exception of items 8, 9, and 10, and I guess item 18 is not on the consent calendar. We'll do that separately.
Okay, please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay. First item pulled is item number eight, workers' compensation third-party administration extension of contract. Councilman Hen?
Yes, I note from the staff report that we do this contract, we participate jointly with Costa Mesa in this contract. This is for administration of workers' comp claims for city employees, which is a very important activity and needs to be carefully handled. We use a what's called third-party administrator for that, which is an outside entity that actually adjusts the claims and investigates them and so forth. I note that from the staff report, we are just going ahead with Costa Mesa to review this, to renew this contract for another year with a 3% increase in cost. And I'm curious why the decision was made not to bid this out in view of the fact that we're in an environment today where it seems like we're having very good success with bidding out of contracts, and so I'm hopeful the staff can enlighten us about that.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I'd like to call Lauren Farley, who is our risk manager, forward, and she will try and address your question.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. Yes, this indeed is a very important contract and is a very valuable service that we go out to bid on periodically. We've had some disruption in our dedicated unit. We've had a dedicated unit for almost 15 years, roughly about 15 years. That dedication brings us claim service to our employees and supervisors that we feel is necessary in order to adjudicate those claims at the lowest level and complete for our employees. Because of that disruption last quarter, we felt we needed to extend the contract up to another 12 months to get some stabilization in the unit. We've done that with a new claims adjuster. We've been very successful with that new claims adjuster. We are getting very good reviews from employees and supervisors as to her performance. In addition to that, even though we're in a joint effort and unit with Costa Mesa, our contracts are separate with CorVel, our current provider. We are looking at whether or not we, as Newport Beach, should go out on our own and have our own separate dedicated unit. Our needs are starting to not mirror Costa Mesa's needs exactly, and so we're not sure whether our partnership will remain intact in that procurement of these services. And as we look at this type of service in the public sector, the service is very constant for public sector, third-party administration. The eight companies that came to bid last time in this process, of those eight, seven are still in the business and are still in business. There are several more that may bring forth a good competitive price to us, and we want to certainly maintain the price that we have, or even better, if we get those qualified bidders that we hope will come to the table when we go out to bid.
So two questions. Did they explain why they needed a 3% increase? And also, it sounds to me like it is your intent to bid this out then at your next opportunity?
It is indeed our intent. We are only extending the contract through the end of this calendar year. They expressed the 3% increase due to operational costs to us. We typically, when we do a multi-year contract for these services, look to blend between like a 2% and a 5% increase for the years and then go to a zero, so we do an increase at the first year and second year and not to the third year. So typically, we float in that 2% and 5% increase range, and it was operational costs. The compliance that we need to do at the state level relative to notices to employees and so forth has increased, even though the reform of 2004 brought us reductions in prices relative to medical costs and the like, the administrative costs to properly noticed employees of their due rights and so forth have gone up.
Okay, any further questions, Lauren? Excellent. Okay, does anyone from the public wish to address the council on this item? Seeing no one, I'll bring it back for motion.
Move the item.
Please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, next item pulled was item number nine, organizational review of the Utilities Department, approval of contract with OMTS. Councilwoman Gardner?
Yes, I think sometimes we don't write these. I'm assuming that's what it is. As carefully as we might, I'm looking at the second page, and it says, "Some of the important issues that will be addressed are what task responsibilities are currently being performed by the department?" We don't know. I mean, I'm not really being facetious, I'm assuming that that's just boilerplate or something, because surely we know that.
I don't think that is written very well. That would be the first thing I would say. But also, looking at job descriptions and seeing what people are doing, you know, what all of the responsibilities are, are the job descriptions accurate? Are the people performing what they're supposed to as far as the job descriptions?
Right, well, that's something different, so that makes sense. And then, as far as looking at what the top management structure of the department should be, was this addressed in the first review a few years ago?
I'm going to ask George Murdock. I don't recall.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. I'm George Murdock, the Utilities Director. In 2006, we did perform a study, and it really was more classification and certification of our current employees in 2006, and no, the upper management was not. The structure then was quite a bit different than we have now. Currently, what I'm faced with is I have an operations manager position vacant, which was my position before I moved into Utilities Director position in January, and I have two other vacancies coming up, as two of them were called into active duty into Kuwait come March and in April, and I also have three pending retirements. So the structure of the upper management is changing quickly as taking over as Utilities Director. I'm looking at reassigning the tasks, which it maybe helped, I apologize for the staff report, but looking at tasks and how they're assigned, we have a wide range of responsibilities in utilities, from oil and gas to water, wastewater. We also are now handling the gas collection system on 19th Street, and so other factors are entering into utilities, and I need to divvy these tasks out to certain employees that perhaps weren't hired to handle these tasks. So we didn't look at this in 2006. The environment has changed three years later, and so that's why we're asking OMTS to come back, reevaluate what has been done, what the successes were, and what we can look forward in the future, and so.
And help you reshape, reshape the department?
Reshape it and cover some of the holes that we have because of these vacancies and retirements. These retirements, we have three employees that are retiring that have in excess of 35 years of service with the city Newport Beach, you know, and I find that filling those positions are much more difficult. They have a lot of institutional knowledge, and so I thought, well, it's pretty easy to do that, but you forget what this employee's learned over 35 years. And so we really need to reshape, excuse me, and take this opportunity to maybe create a succession plan and how to move bodies into that to fill these long-term employees.
Thank you.
Any other questions, George?
I'm going to direct to the next.
Okay, does anyone from the public want to address the council? Step forward, please.
Seconded.
Councilwoman Gardner seconded Mr. Webb's motion.
Members of the council, my name is Laura Curran. I want to thank Councilmember Gardner, first of all, for pulling this item because I had some of the same questions. You know, I want to bring up that people do read the staff reports in order to determine what items they want to understand better or comment on, and the staff report, for example, did not have all of the background, which the gentleman just presented, which was very helpful. For, you know, what is the precipitating event? What's the risk to not completing this project? What is the size of the department being evaluated? What's the org chart? I mean, the background he provided shows that there's a need to do a thorough up-and-down look at it, but without calling or asking staff, one would not know that. What are the results of 2006? So it sounds like there are grounds for doing this work. So you move to the provider. What are the qualifications of Lisa Oland? What are her references? Why are we outsourcing this versus doing it ourselves? Now, I asked Dave Kiff that information, and he did provide some of that, but it would be helpful and it would be easier for everyone if that information were provided upfront in the staff report. So again, oftentimes, there is a lot of background information, and it is available if we ask staff, but it would be helpful if that information were available to the council and to the public upfront. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the council? Closed public testimony, bring it back, please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, next item pulled is item number 10, the Newport to Ensenada International Yacht Race, city council sponsorship for a three-year period. Councilwoman Gardner?
First, let me say that I certainly support the Ensenada race. It's a part of Newport's history, but I am, would like to know the rationale behind increasing the amount of money. I know that the race has had some issues. Last year, at lunch, they were talking about the fact that- Last year, at lunch, they were talking about the fact that there were, attendance was different because people were concerned, frankly, about going down to Ensenada. We just saw an article in the paper today, or yesterday, about Rosa Rita and how they're suffering from this because of all the bad publicity with the narco-terrorism in some of those areas. So given that, given the fact that we have given, I think, fifteen thousand past years, I was wondering why there was the increase this year.
I can't say why that increase was requested, but I think there's somebody in the audience who can, who can address that question. I passed on the sponsorship request from the organization.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gardner, City Council.
State your name, please.
Ralph Rodheim, and I'm helping with the Ensenada race this year. They've gone through a whole different look, and they're really working harder on promoting the city of Newport Beach. One of the things that's happened is the start has been moved from the area of the jetty to the Balboa Pier. And the Balboa bid is very excited about this, and we're working to drive more business to the local businesses. And that's one of the areas that's really being enhanced by this sixty-two-year-long race. So the Board of Directors of Ensenada, or the NOSA, has put several factors together to make it a better event, more publicity, to do a better job of promoting Newport Beach, one of which is Wealth TV. It's a cable television show. And if we had to buy that time, it would be in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, but we've been able to negotiate something where they're gonna highlight the city of Newport Beach on this, and this is, will run nationally. Additionally, the official hotel is the Hyatt Regency Newport Beach, and we've been working closely with the Conference and Visitor Bureau on working to promote the city with this event. Nordstrom, Tommy Bahamas are major sponsors, and we're trying to bring more of the yachtsmen to Nordstrom's, to Fashion Island, to Tommy Bahamas, to the local people in support of this large race. Somewhere around ten thousand people come to the city to support this, plus the hundreds of thousands of dollars in TV time and media time. And actually, your sponsorship by having it a multi-year saves the city quite a bit of money on the sponsorship level.
Hard to understand that. If we've been spending fifteen thousand a year, three times fifteen is forty-five, and three times twenty is sixty. So I'm, that math doesn't work for me.
The new levels of sponsorship go from a hundred and twenty-five thousand to ten thousand. So it's a whole different sponsorship level than what was done in the past, and there's more effort on promoting the community this year than in the past. So it's a very different program, different race.
All right, you say that there's going to be more focus on Newport Beach, but, and we have this television, the television's comped, I take it? They're gonna cover us for free, Wealth TV?
They will be covering us for free.
So, the five thousand dollars, what is it? Where are we getting it? What's it going for? The extra five thousand?
Well, in fact, it's not an extra five thousand. There are various levels of sponsorship. A hundred and twenty-five thousand is title sponsor, a hundred thousand is the presenting sponsor, and so actually, the city is one of the lower levels of sponsorship this year.
Is there a lower level?
Yes.
What is that?
Excuse me?
What is that?
The lowest level is ten.
Okay, any other questions, Mr. Rodheim?
Thank you.
I'd like to...
Councilman Webb?
Do you want to take public testimony first?
That's what was my intent. Does anyone want to address this on this issue? Okay, seeing no one else, I'll close that, bring it back. Councilman Webb?
This is a longstanding race within the community, and I very definitely would like to support our increase to the twenty thousand dollars per year and recommend, make a motion to approve the recommended action.
I'd like to ask something. We get this, and this is directed to the convention and Visitors Bureau, we are told that we are going, that we do these things, and it brings funds in to the city. And I don't know that we doubt that, but we never have any real evidence. And it seems to me that this is a really easy one, that we could look and we could see the week before the Ensenada race and the weekend of the Ensenada race, at least look at hotel rooms or something and see if there's a blip. And it'd be great for you. If there is, then we really can do this wholeheartedly. If there's not, then obviously, we'd have to ask about some of those things. But I think that'd be something that we could do, and I think the figures would be really easy. It's not like we're just gonna spend a lot of money to get that. So that's something I'd like to see us do.
Nancy, just so you know, the Economic Development Committee is in fairly advanced stages right now of considering a proposal for an advisory committee to be formed to have a look at these kinds of events, to help advise the city. This advisory committee would have the participation of the Convention and Visitors Bureau, but also be composed of marketing and hospitality experts not having an economic interest in the items coming before them, to be able to bring a little more professional analysis and support for these kinds of things. And so I'm hopeful that that recommendation, I think it's on the agenda for this upcoming Economic Development Committee, and I'm hopeful it'll mature to council shortly thereafter. I'm sure that'll be helpful.
Great, thanks.
Okay, any other discussion, comments? Please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, next part of the agenda is oral reports from City Council on committee activities. Councilwoman Daigle?
None.
Councilwoman Gardner?
None.
Councilman Webb?
None.
Councilman Hen?
Why, yes. I am, I mean, yes, just full of good news tonight. The Economic Development Committee, we did have a present, oh, I wanted to make sure that everyone in the city is aware of the fact that on our upcoming agenda for the next meeting, which is March 18th, generally at 8:00 AM here, it is at 8:00 AM here in the City Council chambers, we're gonna have a presentation by Scott Pompey, Pompey, who is the officer of the LA Times in charge of their regional newspapers, and he's gonna give us a little presentation about the status and the future of the daily pilot in our community. And so the EDC is very anxious to hear that. There will be time for question and answer, and we'll just see what our favorite local newspaper has to say these days with all the changes going on in the newspaper industry and the cutbacks that seem to be affecting everyone. And then, we'll hear more about this later, later on the agenda item, but I, there was a discussion at the Executive Committee, the EDC, this last Wednesday, about the fact that our esteemed legislators in Washington seem to be having a favorite whipping boy these days, which is the need for businesses and associations and whatnot to actually have meetings and conventions. I've been to many of these. There's actually work done at these meetings and conventions. They are needed and necessary, but it seems like our legislators think they're all a bad idea and just a big old boondoggle for the participants. There have been some abuses, there's no doubt of that. But this is a business that is very important and necessary, and especially so for Newport Beach, and I hope our residents appreciate that. We may hear more about that this evening. With regard to the Ad-Hoc Committee on Group Homes, there are appeals of the Ocean Recovery Continuance, that's for 1115 West Balboa, as well as the Newport Coast Recovery Denial for 1216 West Newport. And those will be on the agenda for the next City Council meeting. I encourage anyone who has input or comments about those proceedings to please attend. Both of those appeals will be heard, I expect, on the 24th. There is a meeting this Thursday at 4:00 PM here in the City Council chambers to consider the Yellowstone Recovery Use Permit. This is a series of group homes that are located in recently annexed Santa Ana Heights, two of which have been recommended for denial, and two others of which will be considered, I think, again, as well as a reasonable accommodation request on Thursday, 4:00 PM here in council chambers. And then you heard the report on the abatement letters. I think our city attorney's office is right on the mark here with regard to helping the city do the best job it can to enforce its ordinance and the necessary abatements associated with it. That's all I have.
Councilman Rosansky?
Nothing, thank you.
Mayor Portem Curry?
No items.
And I have nothing to report this evening. Okay, we'll go to the public hearings. Our first public hearing this evening is item number 12, the Award of Non-Exclusive Solid Waste Collection Franchise, A to Z Recycling Services Incorporated.
Thank you, Mayor Salich, councilmembers, and I want to thank Councilmember Hen for his comments on the eWaste program. We were wondering who dropped off that big pile of stuff, so now we know.
I was told that the hard drive was going to be erased, and I suspect that's the case.
Well, as soon as we look at it, we'll, if there's nothing good on there, we'll erase it. That's how we recycle stuff. We see what we need. Tonight, A to Z Recycling Services, if council approves this franchise agreement, A to Z will become the city's twenty-eighth franchised hauler. A to Z has met the insurance requirements of the agreement, they have completed the application, and staff is recommending approval. And just for council's information, we do have four more franchise haulers pending, so you may see this again over the next few months.
Okay, any questions, Mr. Harmon?
You know, I just have a quick question. We get these things, they're actually pretty perfunctory. Is there another process where we, these don't need to come to council?
Yeah, that'd be great.
I mean, we hear the staff report, I've never seen one denied. I don't know why we would ever deny one.
Yeah, it would take a rewrite of the policy. The way it is right now, council has to approve it. We have a public hearing.
I'll make a motion to approve this franchise agreement with the understanding that staff's gonna come back with a rewrite of our policy, because I don't think we need to be hearing these every time.
Yeah, one of the things City Manager and I were talking about a couple of weeks ago is taking a look at the entire structure. I mean, obviously, if we keep going at this pace, we'll be up to fifty, sixty within a couple, few years. And, you know, it gets to the point where managing sixty haulers in the community can get pretty cumbersome, downright tough. So what I would like to do, and what Homer and I have been talking about, is come up with maybe some options to the current structure, come back, maybe to study session and talk about that, because the revenue received from the franchise haulers, we have twenty-eight, but I would guess that about ninety-six, seven percent of the revenue is from about five or six haulers. So there may be a different way to structure this, some kind of a tiered structure, where the people coming into town once a year on a construction project, you know, maybe we have a flat fee and they get a sticker in the windshield of their trucks, and the sixteen percent franchise fee is more for the haulers that are picking up hundreds of tons a week. So we'll come up with something, and I, you know, I agree if I can get out of coming, no offense, but, you know, if I can go home at 5:00 o'clock, that'd be great.
Oh, I second, I don't think there was a second, was it?
Yeah, well, I think Councilman Rosansky made the motion, so it'd be a second. Okay. Anybody want to address the council on this issue? Seeing no one, bring it back and please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, next public hearing is item number 13, Proposed Underground Utilities District Number Nineteen, Santa Ana Heights, Mesa Drive, Cypress Street, and a portion of Orchard Drive.
Mayor, members of council, we're pleased to bring this item to you tonight. Thankfully, through the efforts of Santa Ana Heights Project Advisory Committee and in conjunction with the County of Orange, we're able to bring this to you tonight. We have a short presentation that we'd like to present to you. Tom Sandifer from our office will be making that presentation tonight.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. Got a short presentation for you on the Santa Ana Heights Underground District. So we had a short presentation for the Underground District Nineteen. Brief history of the district. In 1995, they started canvassing the neighborhood, looking to form this district. By 2005, the City Council had formed the district as UD Nineteen. In April of 2008, it was determined that public funds could not be used to underground on private property. So in January, the City Council authorized an informal survey to let everybody know what was going on, to gauge the level of interest in continuing the project, and to set tonight's public hearing. The district is generally along Mesa Drive, Cypress Street, and Orchard Drive, and the RDA funds will pay for all of the undergrounding of the overhead facilities in the public right away. Also tonight, we're requesting an amendment to the boundary map to remove several properties that have multiple poles lines along them, south of Mesa Drive. These properties will be removed from the district, and they won't have to, and we will underground up to that first pole, and then the lines will continue overhead to their property across two, three poles, sometimes that they have on those properties. Any future building permits that these properties take out, they'll have to underground at that time. There are also two other properties that we were informed during our public outreach. People came to us and said, "We're served from the rear bar properties, not from Mesa Drive." So, and the pole line that they were served on is not in the district. So we're taking them out of the district in order to allow them so they don't have to underground to a pole that's not in the district. Here are the properties in blue that are being taken out here, and these two properties over here are the properties that are served on the pole line that runs back here, and that's not in the district. The 2005 costs for the district, three and a half million roughly for AT&amp;T and 1.2 million for, well, three and a half million for Edison, excuse me, and about 1.2 million dollars for AT&amp;T. We've added a cost of living increase contingency to this to try to bring those 2005 dollars up to 2009 dollars, but we won't be able to determine what the final costs are until Edison bids the project.
Now, Tom, those 7.6 million, that's being paid for by the redevelopment agency funds?
Right, our agreement with the redevelopment agencies, seven and a half million, but these are just estimates from 2005. We're not sure what the actual cost is gonna be.
So does that mean that if the cost comes in at eight million, then the city makes up the difference?
Actually, we're hoping, you know, in this bidding environment, it'll come in less. So hopefully, that's the case.
Hopefully, but if it's not the case?
We'll certainly have to look to the county.
I'm sure our representative from the county will help us understand that.
There's some assessments and hookup costs for some recent projects that were done in the city. As you can see, the total homeowner responsibility in the far right-hand column there for UD Nineteen is much, much lower, because the average parcel assessment is zero dollars, and that's the amount of money that the county is giving us to do this undergrounding. So the homeowners will not be responsible for that. So their benefit is that average parcel assessment. The reason we're having the public hearing and the informal survey and an outreach meeting that we had in February is to make sure that every homeowner is aware that they are required to pay for the private property hookups, which is different than what they were told in 2005. This gives them a forum to express any concerns and ask any questions that they might have.
Are the homeowners required to have an election like we would with any other underground district?
No, they're not. Right, there is no assessment, so there's no election.
So your option, if you choose not to pay the five thousand dollars, is to not have electricity, I suppose? That's the stick?
Yeah, if they refuse, then it comes down to the same way we would handle any other assessment district.
And...
And is there a provision for them to finance this on their property tax bill, or they write a check and pay cash?
I think...
I think I can probably step in and help out here. Yeah, this is a private property matter. We can't use public funds to finance work on private property, so this is something the homeowner will have to do. If they choose not to do it, or they cannot afford to do it, we have a process that's in our municipal code that allows us to follow a process where we can essentially get approval through the courts to enter onto the property, perform the work, and place a lien on the home for the amount of the work.
What is the process we've used to notify all the property owners of this hearing tonight?
We sent them an informal survey to every single property owner, letting them know that, what their estimated hookup costs were going to be, and whether they were before the district going forward, or whether they'd be opposed to the district going forward. Just an informational survey for you guys.
We also held a community meeting at Santa Ana Heights Fire Station, and it was, there's more people than are in the chambers this evening, so that's probably a good sign.
The aforementioned survey, we received 49% of the surveys back that we sent out, and of those surveys, 77% were in favor of moving forward with the district. If you choose to move forward with the district tonight, we'll have to adopt a new boundary map and an amended engineer's report, and we'll also approve a third amendment to the memorandum of agreement between the city and the county, and approve a resolution to expend the RDA funds. If you choose not to go through with it, you can abandon the district proceedings and forego the RDA budget. Moving forward, if we move forward from this meeting tonight, we estimate construction will start in late in summer. Take about a year to underground all the distribution lines. Once the distribution lines have been undergrounded, homeowners will be notified that it's time for them to start pulling permits and getting their hookups together. After the transmission lines, which is another part of this project, go into the ground, they'll remove the poles, we're estimating around fall of 2011. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, anybody else?
Okay, do we get our money from the county as the project progresses and the contractor builds us, or do we have to complete the project and then submit a bill?
Excellent question. Mr. Manero?
Just wondering if we're fronting this for the county, I guess that's the long question to the short question.
I don't have the answer to that, actually. Perhaps someone else on our staff? Mike Senicore?
Mayor, members of council, in the agreement that's in front of you for approval, there's a discussion about the city manager and the county working out a mechanism to either get fronted the cost prior to us moving forward, so what I would think we would do is get the invoices from Edison for the work of the $2 and $7.5 million, forward those up to the county before we write a check to the utility companies, and I think that might be the process. It's in for discussion on the agreement, though, in front of you.
That is the way the discussion took place. Of course, that was about three or four years ago, and that is that the county would wait and see us presenting a bill to them, an actual bill for reimbursement, and then they would reimburse us. Mr. Manero might have a different take on it, but that's the way I remembered it, and we did kind of leave it general.
So we get one bill from Edison, and we don't have to worry about paying the contractor as he goes, is that correct?
As we get bills, we would submit them to the county for reimbursement.
Okay, Councilman Han?
Yeah, all of those homeowners that were along that left there, every one of them wanted to not be in the district?
They were taken out of the district because they have multiple poles along their lines, so instead of having just undergrounding to the house, you'd have to underground to one pole, set a transformer, maybe, underground to another pole, another pole, and there are multiple buildings on that site, so what ended up happening is it became a design concern for AT&amp;T and Edison. They were concerned about having all this work going on and what it would do to delay the rest of the undergrounding district.
But my question is, it looked like there were seven or eight homeowners in that row of properties there, or property owners, and each and every one of them did not want to be included, is that correct?
We took them out of the district.
I know that, but was it at the request of each of those property owners?
No, actually, the reason why they were taken out was because those properties are very deep, and they essentially have a pole at the front of their property that runs, and then there's several poles that run into the interior of their properties. And what was determined was that those are all essentially on private property, so we couldn't use public funds to do underground on private property per the law. So the choice was to leave those poles up, or to force those folks to do fairly extensive undergrounding on their own properties, and the decision was made to just underground up to their properties and then let them essentially, you know, hook up at some other time in accordance with maybe a building permit or some other kind of process.
So none of them are unhappy about this decision?
I believe they would be, since they don't really have any cost.
And any of them that wanted to subsequently underground their utilities can do so at their own time, just like anybody else would do?
That's correct.
Councilman Rosansky?
Yeah, I guess I'm, the reimbursement thing is, does seem to be kind of a black hole here that really should have been filled in, in the MOU, you know, especially these trying times. I understand this is redevelopment agency money, actually, that's paying for this, not the county coffers. The money, there's actually tens of millions of dollars probably sitting in those accounts, maybe the supervisor's assistant would like to, is that your title, Mario?
I don't want to give you a demotion. Chief of Staff, I'm sorry.
Good evening, Mayor Selich and members of the council. My name is Mario Almanero. I'm a professor of law at Chapman University Law School and occasionally Chief of Staff to Supervisor John Morlack. Okay, I suppose I'm here to answer some questions, but I first wanted to say I very much appreciate the work of the state city staff. Mr. Senicore and Mr. Sandifer have been just tremendous in putting this together and working with us, as well as with the PAC, and so we've had nothing but wonderful cooperation in trying to bring a resolution to this matter. In terms of context, the redevelopment agency was, I guess before John took office, was a bit stagnant, as you all remember, and then we were able to get the board of supervisors to approve a series of seven projects in the redevelopment agency that would then wrap it up and wind down eventually, and this was one of the seven, it's probably by far the costliest of the seven projects. I have no doubt that we can work out something where, so long as the invoices are presented to my office, as well as to the Orange County Development Agency, that we can then review the invoices and go ahead and issue payments as it's going that way. I don't see that that would be any difficulty. We weren't involved in those discussions, of course, but I don't see any reason why it can't be handled that way. We just want to maintain and have an agreement to maintain, for cost control purposes, accountability here as we're moving along. And yes, I agree, we've experienced the same issue with the county, that it's amazing how much better deals we've been able to get in bidding things out recently, so we would expect the costs would be lower than originally anticipated, but nevertheless, I think we all have a fiduciary duty to make sure that there's accountability here, and so, so long as the invoices are submitted to me, as well as to Orange County Development Agency, I think we'd be fine with then issuing checks in progress payments.
But no particular timeframe, like 60 days, 90 days?
I'm sure that Homer and I can work that. I don't see any reason why it needs to be anything more than 45 or 60 days. I, the money's there in the redevelopment agency, as you know, it's generated as a result of, you know, a property tax stream, and as a result, we have enough money right now to fund this, so it's not an issue of that.
I have a kind of a question then. In the past, maybe Mike, why don't you come forward, or someone else, maybe Steve would know this, when we've done these other undergrounding districts, how do we reimburse? I mean, the pot of money's been there, but I mean, do they bill us monthly, you know, at the end of the project?
Typically, what happens is Edison will go out and get hard bids for the work, and send us essentially an invoice for the entire amount.
Before the projects?
Before, before the project starts.
So basically, we're going to get an invoice for, let's call it, $7.5 million?
That's correct, which we will pass on to the county.
Just as long as we're not on the hook for paying it before we get the money from the county, I guess. I mean, at that point, it becomes a cash flow issue, because in the past, we've had assessment bond money sitting in a bank account somewhere, but we don't have $7.5 million for this sitting in a bank account somewhere.
So why wouldn't we approve the memorandum with that amendment?
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying, I think we need some kind of a change here to say that we're going to get the money on some kind of a timely basis.
Steve, what, could you go through the process that we have with the county, OCTA, related to the various different projects where we get OCTA funding, and how we submit bills to them, or they give us grants, and all of these are fiduciarily taken care of, but that's something where, to me, when you let a construction contract, you're encumbering the entire amount of money. You are saying you're going to pay them the whole amount, the contractor, and that's been a bid process, and everything's taken care of, and usually, you need to have that money encumbered to where, as the project, the process of payments go through, Edison needs to be making those, not us. They shouldn't have to submit a monthly bill, we should be able to give them whatever it is, as long as they provide the accounting necessary for that bid. So I guess I'm having a problem with a 60-day delay in paying for progress bills, but if we have maybe a 60-day delay after the award for the entire amount, then that might work.
You know, I'm not sure what kind of timeframe Edison usually gives us to pay.
When you got a contractor working out there, they work, they do 30 days worth of work, and they want to get paid for that 30 days of work. They don't want to get paid 90 days from now, they want to get paid within two weeks, usually.
And I think that's generally why Edison, you know, bills us for the entire amount, so they have the funds on hand to pay. Edison is the actual entity that is paying the contractor, not the city, so we're not involved in any progress pays, not any approvals. We're essentially, you know, giving the money to Edison, and they're going to pay it out.
So they typically bill us before the work starts, then, so they have the money in hand?
Yes, that's what they do.
Well, and it's the same thing, usually, when we get funding for any other cooperative project, most of our agreements are set up to where the contributing agency gives us that amount of money upfront, so that when we encumber the funds, we know where we're going to be paying the contractor from.
Councilwoman Daigle, you have some questions?
Yes, we enjoy a very strong working relationship with Supervisor Morlack's office, so thank you for coming here this evening, and this is unique to have, in our community, to have a government paying, government funds to be paying for the undergrounding, and if you can discuss the boundaries of the redevelopment district and the basis of using redevelopment funds for this project, that'd be great.
Certainly, Councilwoman. Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, of course, the, what we did is, when we came into office, we took a look at, among other things, the specific plan of the RDA to determine what the boundaries would be, and it's been mentioned several times tonight, something is absolutely correct, which is that under the community redevelopment law, under the California Health and Safety Code, we cannot pay for private matters, so for example, under Health and Safety Code, Section 33, 445, it provides that an agency, in this case, the redevelopment agency, can pay all or part of the value of, or the land for the cost of the installation and construction of any structure or improvement that is publicly owned, either within or without the project area. So here, we can pay for this undergrounding because it was part of the RDA specific plan. What we cannot pay for, as has been noted, is the private hookups, because that is not on land, and it would not be an improvement that is publicly owned. The wires running from the undergrounding area to the private homes belongs to them, and that would be a gift of public funds that would violate the California Constitution, so we cannot do that. This is even more unusual in a number of ways, because normally redevelopment applies or requires a finding of blight, and when this redevelopment agency was created, there was a finding of blight. That blight had to do largely with the airport and with noise issues, noise impact issues, and under Health and Safety Code, Section 33,031, there are two types of blight, physical conditions that cause blight and economic conditions that cause blight. And so the noise clearly led to the economic conditions that cause blight, such as depreciated or stagnant property values, or impaired property values. What is unusual here is that, and of course, we weren't around, I gather, none of you were either, at the time this was done, Homer might have been, but a number, oh, you know what, I bet you were, Councilman, what is unusual here is that you've got redevelopment that is probably beyond the normal and traditional concept of correcting blight. Now, is that a legal problem now? No, because the time to challenge things like that expires 90 days after the approval of the redevelopment plan. So we're well beyond that, but it is important to understand, it's important for the community to understand, that a number of these things that we are together accomplishing are really a little bit beyond what normally constitutes the curing of blight. We've developed, as you know, the Mesa Birch Park, we've improved the Orchard Street Park. I think clearly, clearly, things that do come within it will be something like the way we're going to fix Klein Drive, I mean, it's a dirt street right now, and so that probably is fairly within it. Certainly, the noise abatement program where we essentially put in new windows or other insulation with regard to the noise clearly came within it. So it's important to understand this is a tremendous benefit, it is an overall public benefit, but it's a different kind of public benefit than you normally see with respect to curing of blight.
Councilman Han?
So Mario, did you understand the discussion about the money? And the payment of the, I'd like to go over that again?
Yes, sir.
Because it sounds to me like we're going to get a bill for seven-plus million dollars, and then we're going to pass that bill over to you, Mario, and you're going to write us a check for $7.5 million?
Well, I can't write checks, but...
But the RDA will, but we're going to get the money, right? Before we have to spend it, right?
Let me point...
That's what I want to be clear about.
Let me point, Council, that Section 4 of the agreement, where it talks about how the county's going to make prompt payment of invoices that are presented in front of them, and just so the council's aware, we expect three invoices early on in this project, one from Edison Distribution, one from AT&amp;T, and one from Edison Transmission. All those invoices will be in hand, already, we have the Edison Transmission number, it's about $2 million. We could today hand that to Supervisor's office and...
Well, do you have it with you?
Actually, I do, but until this is approved tonight, we weren't going to move forward with any expenditures, and obviously, being sensitive to the economy and our budget, we wouldn't want to move forward with any expenditures from our offices until we receive the funds from the county, so that's our intent.
To address you, though, very specifically, Councilman, the answer is prompt payment's prompt payment. You aren't going to have to advance these monies. The RDA is paying for this, not the city of Newport Beach in the sense of this improvement. In addition, I would note that you're approving this amendment to the MOA. Theoretically, the county then has to still approve the amendment to the MOA, so once it's executed, you can begin sending us invoices, and it'll be then executed, not an executory contract, and we can move forward. But no, the city is not going to have to pay or advance it, certainly, we agreed to step up and pay it, and we are going to do that.
So is our city attorney comfortable that this language that's in here now captures the spirit of this discussion?
He drafted it, we didn't.
Well, then I've asked the right person.
The answer's no. If you give me a couple minutes, I can probably craft something out of this. I'm not sure that my office drafted this, but if that's the case, then so be it, but let me tinker with this for a moment, and I think I can capture it.
We'll take public testimony and come back.
Mr. Mayor, before Mario leaves, I want to raise the question that was raised...
Mr. Mayor, before Mario leaves, I, I want to raise the question that was raised earlier and just make sure that there isn't any misunderstanding here, and that's Section 3. The last sentence says, "The parties here to expressly agree that the city shall be responsible for any costs and expenses associated with the project that exceed the seven-and-a-half million dollars in agency funds allocated to this project." I mean, that's, that's very definitive, and it's an issue that I have long been concerned about, because the county wanted to put some kind of limitation there and just not leave it as a blank check, and that's what the cost was going to be.
Well, that was my understanding too, Homer. When, when these documents were presented to me by city staff several weeks ago, I, I assumed they came from the city. The county has, County Council didn't draft these documents. And so I looked at it. I was aware of that provision. You didn't ask me, but yes, I, it was my understanding specifically, that if it goes over 7.5 million, the city is responsible for any excess over 7.5 million.
I object to that very strongly, because we have taken a position on assessment districts within the, all of the rest of the city, that undergrounding of utilities is a responsibility of the adjoining property owners, and that if, unless you get the, our Rule 2A or whatever it is, monies, where the, where the Edison spent for all of it, but it's my understanding that, that at least throughout the city, the rest of the city, adjoining property owners pay for it. So I object to the city paying anything in, on, for this undergrounding district.
And it was always my understanding that the city was acting as a project manager-
Right.
And the cost, the city had no control over the cost. So, you know, the project is what, what, what the project is. And the only, the only cost the city has is that our personnel expenses will be reimbursed for-
What is, what is the urgency to form this district now before we have a hard bid from Edison like we do in other projects? I mean, Elbow Island, for example, we have a hard guaranteed bid that we know what the money is before we actually go ahead and form that district. What is the urgency here to do this now before we have a bid?
Well, that's a good question, and I don't know the answer to.
And Mike, can you put the-
Well, let me ask you this. How would you address, how would you address the risk involved with, if it's more than 7.5 million?
All right, Councilwoman Daigle, when I saw that language, I frankly was mildly surprised. It came from the city. It is not what my understanding was. I committed to the PAC, to whatever it took, assuming it was not insane, that, that we were going to take care of this, okay? I did, on behalf of the supervisor, I don't have an objection to that clause coming out, okay? I really don't, because that was my understanding before I read these documents. And as I said, we didn't, we didn't draft them. So I, I don't know who did it, the city. But certainly, if that's, I thought, well, gee, if there's been a, a run, a change in heart at the city, I'm not going to object to that.
So if the city were to adopt it, then the, the full cost that the county will be paying through the RDA funds, and if it's 8 million or 72, 7.2 million, whatever comes out, that the county is then willing to pay that?
Yes.
And can that be, I guess, the question would be our city attorney, can that be then manifest itself in the contract, the agreement?
I didn't catch that.
I think what we're essentially saying, and Mario can correct me if I'm wrong, is that the county will pay the amount of, of what it is, whether it's 7.2 million or, or 8-point million, so they'll take all the risk in not knowing exactly what the bid is versus, you know, they're only paying 7.5 million.
That's certainly acceptable. I have some suggested language that might clear this up at this point, if, if anyone was ready.
Delighted to hear it.
Thank you. If, based upon your representation on paragraph 3, I would strike that last sentence, saying that we're not going to be paying for that, so I would take that out. And then on paragraph 4, let me read it. It's, and I've got sort of my blue line, so to speak. "The agency executive director and the city manager shall cooperate in payment procedures for the agency's funding of the project. The city shall submit to agency, to the agency detailed documentation of invoices for expenditures. The agency shall properly pay all properly documented costs after receipt of the necessary documentation. The city shall not front funds for the payment of costs."
I would say advance funds rather than front.
Fair enough.
That's acceptable.
But if I may, just one more, and I know I'm being nitpicky here, but going back to Section 3, where it says, "All the parties agreed to an amount up to 7.5 million to pay for and reimburse the city for all costs and expenses." Let's say the, the bid comes in at 7.4 million dollars, but we have staff cost into it of $225,000. I, I don't know what they are, but it, it isn't just the bid amount, but it, the, the city also is fronting the cost of the management of the project, is it not, Steve? Or Mike? Do we have any idea what that amount is?
Mr., Ms. Mayor, Steve, is there a real need to go tonight, or could this item be continued until the next meeting to where we can work out this wording a little bit better?
I'm a little bit concerned with the timeline, Councilman.
Okay.
I really am. I think we've, we're pushing it as it is.
I think this can be fixed by just striking the words "up to" 7.5 million in the first sentence, right?
Yeah, and I, Council, I would also add at the top of that, Paragraph 3, and I don't have it in front of me here, but an approximate cost of 7.5 million dollars, because we do intend to come back and have a paving project administered by the city at the end of all the work, and the Supervisor's Office knows this. We've taken those responsibilities away from Edison, because we can frankly do it cheaper and better. And we do plan on having a contract before Council some two or three years from now to resurface the streets, which will be included as a cost to this district. So I estimate it at 7.5 million dollars at the top of that. To answer your question about moving forward tonight, moving forward with the amended map is important, so we can let Edison know that we are moving forward with this district, the amended map as it is. Approving the language in this agreement, I would suggest that we defer to the city attorney, based on his modifications, that recommendation, and we can spend some time-
So that we could, we could form the district and, and put, put together the map, but as far as the, the funding and the agreement, that could, that could wait for two weeks until, I, I'm always very nervous when we try to, to make adjustments to the, to the agreement, that we might not pick up everything.
That, that certainly could happen tonight. We do, we'd like, we would like to give Edison the word to go forward with the bidding on this project, assuming that the council's-
Well, let me ask you this. Was this agreement reviewed by the city attorney's office, or?
Mr. Harp put the-
There must have been. It was signed by-
It was reviewed by my office. It wasn't, but yes, it was reviewed by my office. It's signed off on my office, and I don't know the exact circumstances with respect to that, but we can get this cleaned up before the next meeting.
I, I have a question here. We, can, Mario, because you can, you're expressing concern about timing here. Is the timing issue related to the approval of the map and all that, or the actual MOU with the county?
I think, Councilman Rosansky, that we would be delighted if you would approve the boundary amendment and move forward with the district, and then if you need two weeks to clean up the MOA, that'd be great if Mr. Hunt would be so kind as to, once it is, send it, send it to me, email it to me, so that I can okay it, so that we're all happy before the 24th. That would be just great.
Yeah, I, I would think that that would be the recommended course here. Obviously, Councilman Webb has some reservations, and if you don't think that that's going to create an issue, then I would, I don't know if we're ready for a motion on that yet, but certainly, I think that's-
Yes, my district, so if you can hold on.
I've got a, I've got a question here. I don't, I don't, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I guess I will. Don't you feel a little bit nervous? I mean, we're nervous committing open-ended here. Aren't you a little bit nervous on the county's end, making an open-ended commitment on something without a hard bid on those?
Well, except that what we did, as we understood from, from day one, that it was going to be about 7.5 million, but one of the advantages has been, we've saved a tremendous amount on the other projects. We've saved a whole lot of money on the other projects. They've come in way under on almost all of them, so I'm a little more comfortable than I would have been otherwise. Nevertheless, the supervisor has committed that this project would get done, assuming there was support for it in the community. There appears to be support for it in the community at a pretty high level. And so we are willing to do it. The RDA can pay for it, and the RDA is going to move forward. We agreed to do it. We committed to this in early 2007, and we're going to keep that commitment.
So I, I only have, are you done? I, I only have one other comment. I just want to make sure. Mike, I appreciate your comment about an amount of approximately 7.5 million. I don't think we need that language in there. All we need to say is, we're going to get reimbursed for the costs. I don't think we need to reference any amount. We're just going to get it. So.
Well, it sounds like we're headed in the direction of proving the map and taking two weeks to work out the wording. I think we'll let the city attorney and the Supervisor's Office get that figured out.
I do have another question about those numbers up there. The, a, a big chunk of it is the estimated Edison ITCC tax and, I don't know, it's 1.2 million dollars. As we all know, that that's kind of a, a holding place in case the IRS ever comes back and asks for money, because this is a private improvement or some legal mumbo jumbo. Anyway, in our city now, we don't even collect that, at least on our last one or two undergrounding districts. And my question is, what's going to happen with that money? Is it going to just sit in the redevelopment agency until?
In addition to these numbers here, if I point you to Exhibit A in the, right behind the end of that MOA, or whatever that resolution is, it talks specifically about what the estimate is. We believe the costs are going to come in well below what this 2005 estimate was. These numbers included also the private hookups back in 2005, so in addition to the ITCC tax that was included in the estimate, we also had the private hookups that were there. So we, we believe there's quite a bit of cushion in this, and we are going to come in well below the 7.5 million.
I understand that we're coming in below. I'm just, even at the lower number, there's going to be a set aside here for this ITCC tax. So is that money going to stay within the redevelopment agency's account until the time period lapses for them to come back, or?
Yes. The RDA, the RDA sunsets in 2016. The reason is that even after the projects are completed, it remains open because there, the conduit, a stream toward the bankruptcy debt that continues to be paid until 2016.
Right.
And, but at that point, it would, I imagine it would just-
Well, how long is the period in which the IRS can come back and ask for the money?
I don't practice that area wide.
Well, somebody here knows the answer to that.
To, to Mr. Rosansky's question, though, I mean, these are 2005 estimates, and in 2005, we were adding the ITT, the ITCC tax to all of these districts, and as a matter of policy, the city now is no longer doing that. So the issue is, are we going to do it now?
Well, I think the real question is, is if the federal government applies that tax to Edison, and Edison in turn bills us for the 1.2 million dollars, would the RDA be there to pick up the tab 7 years from now?
Yeah, exactly. That's my point.
And up till 2016, the answer is yes. After 2016.
Well, how far, I guess my question is, how far, how far out are we until the IRS can't question us?
My understanding is, it's seven years.
So we're just under the wire here.
That's, that's what my understanding is. But we also have, you know, as-
Well, maybe when you come back next two weeks, you can have an answer for that, city attorney.
Actually, that's a, that's a very good question, because what happens if the RDA spends that 1.2 million on something else, and now we come, somebody asks for it, and there's not 1.2 million left in the RDA?
Right.
So I think it's a very good question.
And, and I guess my, further on, let's say that they, they don't ask for it, and at the end of 2016, you have 1.2. What happens with the money that's in that redevelopment agency account at the end of the day?
Anything that's unexpended goes back to the county.
So I think we want the ITC tax too.
Okay, well, in any event.
Are you, are you absolutely sure about that? Because we had, over a third of the redevelopment agency was in Newport Beach at the time the redevelopment agency was formed, with the understanding that, that we would be kind of a one-third partner, and so we, the City of Newport was a, a part of that agency from the very beginning.
That's my understanding, that when these projects are done, that's it. And the remainder, once the stream, the income stream is finished paying off the bankruptcy, that's it. I could be wrong about that, Councilman, but I, I, I've never been told by anybody until tonight that the City of Newport Beach now expects some money back from the RDA.
We're not expecting anything back from the RDA.
We may have to step back from this whole agreement, if that's what you're suggesting.
Well, I'm not suggesting that. I'm just saying that the Newport Beach was a part of the redevelopment agency, and we participated very heavily in the early parts of this agency, because it was our properties that were redeveloped inside the boundary of Newport when it was part of the unincorporated county area that funded most of the early redevelopment agency projects. And we didn't get the advantage of that increased tax revenue on the areas that was within the city. And so I think that we need to perhaps look at how things disappear at the very end.
Um, we, can I, before there's any further discussion, I want to see if there's any additional obstacles or concerns, if, if there was a motion to move to amend the boundary map, move forward with the district, and then have the city attorney work out the MOU, and then come back on the ITC issue. Are there any additional obstacles that you see?
I don't see any other obstacles, and I would like to say that those questions that Don's raising and maybe that I've raised are not, I agree, are not part of this agreement and we, and the project. Those are certainly questions that may be asked later on. I saw you were a little concerned about that, and I, I'd like to say, at least from my part, I'm not going there as part of this. That may be a discussion somewhere down the road or sometime, but that's not part of this discussion.
Well, I certainly can be-
I guess I've been around too long.
I mean, I would like to-
No, no, not at all, because I can't make those kind of commitments on something that's well-
What I'm saying is, I would like an understanding of, of the 1.2 million dollars, because I think that is a, a real potential liability out there that we need to, we should have addressed.
Well, and in answer to tho, to those issues, we have a limited number of projects, and as I remember, we're just about done. I mean, there's this one, Klein Drive, and I think everything else, we're, we're-
Possible equestrian property issue?
Yes, well, we'll have to see, but that's right. But even that one isn't going to be a significant, huge, huge amount of money. So, so we're really not talking about very much left. And so I don't think it's a concern that we're going to go off spending it on other things, because there aren't any other things. The board limited it.
At the risk, at the risk of being flagged for piling on here, I, I just, I just want to make sure, because I, I want to know for sure, if, if someone decides that ITCC tax needs to be paid, who's going to get the bill? And if it's the City of Newport Beach that gets that bill, then I think we want the money from the RDA to come to the City of Newport Beach to fund that potential obligation and not have to rely upon whether or not the money is in the RDA at the time that bill comes toddling through here, whether it's seven years and one month over, you know, it's one month over the deadline, and the money's already gone back to the county, or somebody thinks up another project and whatnot. I mean, I, I don't think we want to, this is different than an assessment district for the residents here, you know.
Perhaps the city attorney can write a clause to place it in some sort of an escrow account or something, if that's what you want to handle. We'll take a look.
There are a number of different potentials for how to handle that, and I think we can address that in the context of fixing the contract. The, the question I have is, is that will, going forward with approval of the boundaries and so forth, commit us to a situation that if we can't reach agreement, that we are bound to proceed forward at this point? And I, I do not believe that would be the case, but I want to make sure that I'm not missing something. So if we approve the boundary agreement and we take the action other than approval of the MOA, and we come back with the MOA either in two weeks, which I hope would be the timeframe, or later, we're not actually proceeding forward with the district. We, if, let's say we can't reach agreement with the county, which I don't think is going to happen, where are we then? And nobody seems to know. Then my, my suggestion would be, absent some catastrophic event, we bring this back in two weeks with a solved problem and not put ourselves at risk, and then proceed with cleaning this up and have it on your next agenda in two weeks, unless that causes a problem with the RDA and ultimately performing the project.
Waiting two weeks on the MOA doesn't at all.
The city attorney's suggesting that we wait on adopting the amended boundary map too, if I understand him correctly.
I'm saying that if we don't have assurance that by approving the boundary and so forth at this point, that we're not committed without having the MOA final, I want to come back with the whole shebang in two weeks, if there's no problem with the county. And we'll make this a priority to make sure we get those things worked out, and we don't have these loose ends before we step off into this project.
As you wish.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Apologize for the snafu.
Okay. Why don't we do this? Why don't we take the public testimony of those in the audience that came here this evening to testify in this, and we can bring it back for motion after that testimony concludes. So with that, I'll open the public hearing. Anybody that wants to address the counsel on this assessment district, please step forward. This is the time to get up and speak.
Hi, Mayor and council members. My name is Holly Jarvis. I live in the proposed undergrounding assessment district, and it looked like it was going for a vote, and I didn't think I had to get up and talk, but now if you're gonna put it off for another two weeks, I might not be able to be here. I've lived in the neighborhood for 18 years. This project was proposed about 15 years ago. So, the frustration of the community, of the amount of time we've taken votes on it, the R D A originally had some 55 million dollars in there that was supposed to be spent in our neighborhood to improve it, and in the 18 years I've been here, we got the park. That's it. So, for our community, this is something that finally is going to be put in out of all those millions of dollars, so I really would appreciate your support for this. I understand the legal difficulties, and I understand wanting to make sure that the money is there, which obviously makes sense, but I just hope that there's support for the, from the council for this project, once you work out the details. There's safety issues, the poles are in the trail, the poles are in the sidewalk, where you physically have to get off the sidewalk to go into the street to go around the telephone poles. So, there's safety issues, it's unsightly, there's a number of reasons to support it. The other thing is, with the terms of the survey that went out, a lot of the people who got the survey did not understand the little dollar figure that was up in the, up in the corner telling them how much they had to pay. Another neighbor and I actually canvassed the neighborhood, and there's actually more support than what you got back in the survey. Most of the people that were against it were people who have rental properties, have not been to the meetings, and didn't quite understand the whole entire R D A funds. So, anyway, I appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's James Condomal. I live at 20431 Southwest Cypress, and I just wanted to say that I support this underground. I urge you guys to support it. We walk the neighborhood, the, the residents there support it, and I'm not an attorney, but I think your answer for the I T C C funds might lie with Edison, maybe the ones that are gonna collect that and hold it in a trust account. I may be wrong, but anyhow, I was just thinking about that. But, anyhow, I, I hope you guys support this. It would be great for the community. Mostly, everybody wants it. I urge your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public testimony, bring it back to council. Councilwoman Deagle?
Yes, I'd make a motion for continuance, and to make sure that the whole package here is buttoned up for two weeks, so if we could bring it back, please, on March 24th. And I, I do think that there's strong council support. We just wanna make sure that, you know, we're not taking on any costs or any risk. So, I'm, I'm hopeful in the next couple of weeks, we can resolve all of that, and I really wanna thank the county supervisor's office, and also the community. I know the PAC really supports the project and all the residents and the staff for getting us to where we are today, so thank you.
I'll second the motion, and I will also add that I am a big advocate of undergrounding. I think this is a great project. I'm sure the project's gonna move forward. Don't feel obligated to come back in two weeks. We just need to kinda tighten up the legal language and the, and the documents and make sure that there's no loose ends here. So, I appreciate Mr. Manero's assistance with these matters, and I'm sure it'll be resolved between our legal department and our city manager and the supervisor's staff.
I, I'm hopeful Mario can come back in two weeks, though.
Can you come to all of our meetings, Mario? We like seeing you. You don't have enough to do?
Okay, there's no further discussion, please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, Madam Clerk?
Public comments. Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Okay, anyone wishing to address the council under public comments, please step forward. Is there anyone? Okay, seeing no one, we'll come back to our regular agenda. Next item is item number 14, Oasis Senior Center Rebuild Project Award of Contract. Do we have the trumpets?
We need a real positive staff report.
It's a good thing to it. Are there any questions?
I don't know, after that last item, I'm, this is a good news item. Good evening, council, council members. I'm actually very happy tonight to bring this project to you. We've been going a long way, you've all been pulling a long, long road on this project, so tonight, we would like to bring to you the Oasis Rebuild Project. We're looking for you to approve our plans and specs tonight, and then we'd like you to approve the award of this contract to K P R S. It's a construction firm out of Bray, and they are with us here tonight. We had a surprisingly good bid on this, as you saw, it's an 11 million dollar contract we're looking for. We'd also like you to approve a 10% contingency on this. And one other item, number four in your PAC, I'd like you to note, we'd like you to approve, upon approval, that we can get it permitted, the tensile fabric structure, it's alternative bid three in our bid. We'd like preapproval on that, if we can get it permitted and through the building process. We'd like to plan on awarding that to also the contractor to build. That's a $207,000 item. Also, in your pack at night, you'll find we're looking for approval on our builder's at-risk policy. This is a policy the city takes out to cover the risk during the construction of it. I have a range, $65,000 to $70,000 in there. I understand we did get the bids back just recently, it's gonna be just under $60,000. So, that'll, $59,000, $60,000 is what I'm hearing. We need approval on that tonight. This, this project actually, we went, as you saw in the packet, we had a prequalifications done, we had 23 contractors prequalified, 18 of them submitted bids, that, that actually was a great showing for this project. It is a LEED certified project, we have a lot of great items in this that we're looking forward to. Our contractor, a K P R S, has done LEED certification buildings before, they've done several projects in this area, they do contain a B license, we did reference checks on them, and we also met with them, because we, the number was so great, we wanted to make sure that this is real and they're okay with it. They, they have assured us that they're good with their number, they have no problems with the plans, and they don't see any problems with them, that they can bring forward, so we're looking forward to go ahead and award it to them. I also wanted to make one other note on here, I put in your packet too, just to give you some information items. We have our cost breakdowns on the third sheet there, and, and the cost to date, we're looking at the project to come in about 16 million dollars. Total construction cost will be about 12.4 million dollars. There's some other things included in there besides the K P R S construction tonight, we have some work with utilities, we have contingency, and we're also gonna be letting a bid out to do the phone and data cable separately in the building. The F F N E pro, for this project is shown to be $870,000, that includes about $600,000 for the building. There's another $250,000 in there for gym equipment in the health center, and there's some, a computer lab in here, we have about another $30,000, I'm sorry, $20,000 in there for that. There's one other item too I need to point out, on the third page, you see fundraising at the bottom, it says Hoag Hospital, 2.5 million. I was informed tonight that there is an error in those numbers, that, that is actually included in the Friends number that you see, the 4.5, which is actually about $4 million what we're looking for. So, the total donations to date is gonna be about $9.6 million. With that, I'd like to remind you again, we're looking for a groundbreaking on this on the 24th of this month at 2:30 out at the Oasis Center, and I'd like your approval of these items. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dave. Any questions of staff?
Just to be sure, that there's gonna be a roof on this building, right? I mean, for this cost.
It's made out of tinfoil, but it's, actually, it's a metal roof, yes, it will be.
And I did have a question or two from some residents about why we need a contingency of a million dollars on this project. Can you address that, please?
Yeah, typically, it is a new building, it's a complex building, it's a LEED building, wood frame, single-story, but generally, we do a 10% contingency. However, that's not money we plan to spend all 10%. My goal usually is 0.1%. If we get 5%, that'd be great, that would be our top goal we're looking for, but it's typical to have a 10% contingency. We could reduce that, but I, then it also brings the option of having to come back if we run into some known problems. The project isn't completely difficult, it is a wood frame building, single-story, but we do have retaining situation on one side. I don't expect a lot of soil issues, we are doing some overexcavation, recompaction, about three feet of that, but you just never know. So, I'd like to keep it if it's okay with the council.
It isn't spent unless it's absolutely necessary.
Correct. It's, it's actually, we, it's not given to the contractor, we actually only use it if we need it for exits or change orders.
And we certainly wanna meet our benchmarking performance standards by keeping that cost as low as possible.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you, Dave. Okay, open this up for public comment. Anyone who wants to address the council on this?
Tim, you had sent an email, I didn't know if you wanted to address that.
Tim Stokes, I was also part of the executive building committee with the Oasis Center. I think it states in the staff report that it's, the contingency is being held by the contractor, so that's different than being held by the city.
No, actually, the whole, along with the construction contract, the contingency is held by the city. So, and the way it works is, as the, as the contractor completes various portions of work, they submit a progress pay, we review it, and not only, we also retain a certain amount of that, generally 10%, we hold back. So, at all times, the city is, is holding the cash.
Okay, but I, I think it clearly states in your staff report that they, that you've offered that to the contractor, though.
As I read the staff report, it, it shows the vendor, and so it's really the money that gets paid to that vendor, rather than it actually being held by that vendor.
We, we encumber that amount for that vendor, but we don't actually release the monies. We don't release the money unless they've shown that they've completed the work successfully, and our, and our project managers have approved that, that the work is indeed at that level.
Did you have a question, Councilman Carron?
Just a couple of things, just to observe that this really is a good news story. We considered this issue at the finance committee, and as you know, we were planning to bring financing documents for C O P issuance to fund Oasis, along with the award of this bid this evening. But, as a result of not listening to those who said we should, you know, wait on this project and make it not a priority, but pushing forward and getting these great bids in this, in this market environment, we were able to save not only 7 to 8 million dollars on the construction costs, but were able to pay cash, because nearly all of the construction cost was raised through private donations, either through the Friends of Oasis or development fees. And we really need to commend the committee, who went out and raised the money in the community, and I see many representatives here, who did such a terrific job in doing that, so much so that the city's able to pay its portion in cash and avoid a financing altogether, which will save another 7 to 8 million dollars in terms of financing costs over the life of the transaction. So, this really is a great, fiscally responsible, and good news story for the city, as this building continues to move forward, and I just hope now we can get the ground broken and build it very, very quickly.
Any other comments from the public?
Thank you, Evelyn, for all your hard efforts and your committee.
Okay, we'll bring it back to council for motion.
I would move approval of the item and the changes as indicated by Dave in his report.
Second.
Okay, please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay. Okay, next item of current business, the Newport Beach Conference and Visitors Bureau Agreement, item number 15 on our agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The current Conference and Visitor Bureau Agreement expires on June 30 of 2009. We've had a request, and this was a, a subject of a study session approximately two months ago, where the Visitor Bureau did converse with the city council and say that they would like to bring the contract forward sooner than that. The contract is for a five-year period, that is what is being proposed. The current contract, under the current contract, the city shares the T O T with the Visitor Bureau, 18%, 82% to the city. That would be the same percentage that would be carried forth in, in the new contract. I did hand out to the city council tonight, when the meeting started, this sheet that does give a month-by-month rundown of the money, 18% that was paid to the Visitor Bureau starting in July of '04 and ending in December of '08. I'm sorry, I didn't include that kind of information in the staff report. I know that there is a presentation or some comments here by Gary Sherwin, so I will turn it over to him at this point, if that is your pleasure.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, Honorable Members of the Council, it's a delight to be with you. I'm Gary Sherwin, the President and CEO of the Conference and Visitors Bureau. I just wanna make a few short comments, because you heard our study session presentation, and hopefully, they answered a lot of the questions about the activities that we're involved in, and return on investment and the value that we think that we bring to the community. First, want to thank Councilman Hen for his comments earlier tonight. Obviously, this country is facing an economic situation that none of us have ever seen, I think, in our lifetimes, and we understand the challenges that we're facing, certainly as a hospitality industry. What we have not anticipated, however, is the fact that our friends in Washington at the federal level, in fact, have taken out almost all-in-out war on the tourism industry. Unfortunately, there have been some individuals in the finance industry that have misappropriated some travel funds, we understand that, and we think whenever that happens, they need to be called out on that. Unfortunately, the idea of tourism and travel now has been painted with a broad brush, that anytime somebody steps on a plane to transact meaningful business with colleagues for a sound and business-oriented purpose, therefore, it's now seen as some sort of malfeasance. A recent study by Meeting News Magazine has indicated that 21% of the nation's meeting planners now are canceling, canceling meetings, because it is politically unpopular right now to hold business. Another 52% of the nation's meeting planners now have said that the climate in Washington has made them less inclined to move forward with business. And I will tell you, on behalf of the hotels here in, in Newport Beach, we are seeing a locking up of business like we have not seen before. Just in the last month alone, the response that we're getting from meeting planners, who once said, "I would be more than happy to consider coming," saying, "Don't know, might not send the wrong message. You are Newport Beach after all, and after all, we, we need to cut back." We had a, a large group that we actually booked here in Newport Beach, earlier this year, the, the Conference of Visitors Bureau was very active in this solicitation. It meant hundreds of room nights at, at one of our large hotels. They called up and said, "You know what? The climate isn't right, we can't meet, we need to, but we really can't, we're afraid of the fallout, we're gonna have to cancel our meeting." Now, the hotel will get a cancellation fee, but unfortunately, the city won't be enjoying any of the transient occupancy tax. So, while I applaud our friends in Washington for trying to be good stewards of the TARP money, unfortunately, I think they haven't drilled down far enough to see the ramifications of some of their actions when they talk about stopping all travel, because I think it is really caused a lot of damage to so many communities that we're struggling out of on top of an unbelievably challenging economic environment right now. So, I would encourage you, as, as part of the city, if the, if business calls for it, and your staff needs to travel to transact business, we would hope that you would continue to encourage them to do it, because our other communities certainly need your money, and if you talk about bringing group business to a community, that's economic stimulus in its purest form. Let me, let me really kind of emphasize that point. Also, want to respond to Councilwoman Gardner's comment about special events. Your, your comment's very well taken, and I know that in talking to a lot of the, your fellow council people, they had also said the same thing, that you get many requests to support special events throughout the year. It's a challenging situation that you're put into, because you have no idea whether to gauge whether or not those funds are being effectively spent, what the return on investment is, and Councilman Hen asked us to prepare a proposal that would allow some sort of professional vetting of these requests prior to you having to decide whether you're gonna commit funds or not. So, this group that will be hopefully formed, you'll, you'll be seeing this, this, this concept in the, in the not-too-distant future, will be comprised of marketing professionals, and they will give you, we will give you, our best recommendation. Obviously, it's non-binding, but at least you'll have some sort of expertise from the marketing people, whether or not there's some sort of adequate return on investment. Finally, this is our 20th anniversary in Newport Beach. In April, we will, the Conference of Visitors Bureau will be 20 years old. We wanna thank you for your continued partnership. The industry really does treat it as a partnership, and you have a, an agenda item coming up soon that will go into more detail about what that partnership means, because our industry knows that the problems we're facing right now cannot be solved just through the financial participation of the city. The hospitality industry has to step up and do their part, too. But I'm more than happy to answer any questions for you about what we do or any of the terms of our contract.
Well, I've got one question for you, Gary. I had expressed some concerns to you when you first approached me on this, on going out five years. What would, what would your feeling be in on taking this out three years and doing the same thing with? with the bid rather than five years?
Well, I think the concept of five years was presented for a couple of reasons. I think, one, I know that your consultant took a look at it and as well as our overall contract to see whether or not it was protecting your interests and doing what it needed to do. Your consultant felt it was adequate because we needed to have some long-term obligations that we needed to address, particularly in the international markets, which are based on relationships. I guess the other question is, I know five years is a little unusual for some of the contracts you've put out there. I guess the question would be, if we're under a five-year contract now, is there something that isn't working that is of concern? If it's working, I guess I would say, why mess with something that is obviously successful? I think the hospitality industry would say, this five-year period gives us enough time to be able to plan what we're doing, rather than being constantly worried about having to come back to you with contracts. The bid was designed also to be kind of in lockstep with that contract. Their concern, of course, is that their obligation or their commitment to help step up with funding be contingent upon, hopefully, the city's continued participation. There's no obligation that you have, but they certainly want to make sure that the city is an equal partner with the hospitality industry.
Okay, well, my comments were, you know, based on the fact that, my understanding is, when we went from sixteen percent to eighteen percent, it was meant to be a temporary thing that, for one reason or another, got extended. Given the current economic climate we have, I'm certainly not in favor of going back to sixteen percent right now, but I don't know, it just seems to me that, you know, given out three years, we'd be able to see things settle down a little bit here and get a little bit better lay of the land as to what would be the appropriate level here. I don't know if that concern is shared by anyone else on the council or not, but that's certainly a concern that I have, and it just seems to me that three years would give you enough time to work your way through the existing situation, maybe come back and reevaluate where you are at that point in time, and you could run your bid concurrently with the contract and deal with it on a three-year basis rather than five years. Anyway, that's my thoughts. I don't know how anyone else feels.
I would just, I can understand that, but I also understand the five-year thing because you tend, most organizations, marketing at least, tend to do five-year plans. It's sort of the segment that you work on, and I was impressed with the presentation, the study session, about what we're trying to do in Europe, and understand that that is a long-term goal. So, I mean, this is written so we can walk.
Yes, you can.
You guys can't walk that much, but we can walk with thirty days' notice, so I do think we have some protection if we really felt we were-
Well, this is tied into the bid somewhat, so I wouldn't want to walk from this deal when we have a commitment on the bid to go out five years. I mean, I think they're asking for equal consideration here on the whole thing when they form the bid.
I think the industry is really asking for that more than anything else. You know, whenever you have to go and renew a bid and have to renew a contract, there's obviously a fair amount of work. But I guess the other question would be, if at eighteen percent we've been reasonably successful in accomplishing what you've asked us, and the timeframe has worked, I guess the question would be, why tinker with success? I hope that you feel that way, but I guess there are so many things that sometimes are broken. Why would we want to not continue, hopefully, the good work that we've been able to continue, particularly given a very challenging time? And I will tell you that, as much as I would like to think in three years, the industry will be back on its feet, I kind of wonder if that's going to be the case. We are so far in the hole right now, Mayor, as an industry. I think if you talk to any hotel person who's been in this business more than twenty-five years, it's going to take a long time, not only just to restore the confidence of the visitor to get out there and visit again, because right now, if you believe our friends in the media, the best place is not to stay in a hotel, it's to stay under your bed at home with all of your money. But just to be able to regain the rate that we're being able to get for a room. Because right now, there is a cannibalistic mindset going about all the hotels of, you need to fill a room. And we're seeing rate declines of thirty to fifty percent with our hotels to try to capture whatever available business is there. And when the business gets better, it doesn't automatically zoom back up to the levels it was before. It takes a long time to be able to get the kind of business it's going to take to get to the rate levels that we want. So occupancy, it might be great, but you'll still see some impact on TOT because the rate is not going to be where we'd like it to be.
Mr. Mayor, my concern on the long timeframe isn't so much really a reflection of the Bureau, but rather, you know, the uncertainty in our own city revenues and how we project things. And, I mean, there's a truism in advertising that you've got to have something good to advertise, and you've got to keep it good. And, you know, when the city puts median projects on hold and, you know, things like that, I mean, my primary sort of responsibility is to keep our city looking good, and we've got to be able to fund improvements like that. So, it's really, my concern about timeframe is a reflection of the certainty of the city's revenues, and we know for sure that, you know, the sales tax is down and weakness in other areas may take a little bit longer, but it doesn't, it's not an optimistic picture. So that's, you know, my concern about the timeframe. And as far as the transparency and oversight, I think it's important that the Bureau does submit an annual budget. I was looking in the agreement, I think in Section Six. That is something that's been approved by, that should be approved by council, and so I think we need to get into a regular pattern of doing that.
Okay, Councilman Curran?
Well, one of the biggest challenges in public life is being able to recognize and explain the differences between costs and investments. And when you think about the fact that our TOT tax is our third-largest revenue source in the city, and that as we see our hotel industry and our tourism business go under assault by both competitors and by the economy and by people making irresponsible statements in Washington, that's just as threatening to our community and to our ability to do street beautification projects and to otherwise maintain our quality of life in the city as a shopping center going under in another community dependent on sales tax or an auto dealer moving out or anything else that attacks the revenue base of the city. It's up to us as leaders to focus, as we have effectively, the resources to the Convention and Visitors Bureau to maintain the high standards, high rates, and high quality in demand that our hotel industry and our tourism and visitor industry generally drives our revenue. And we need to continue that. And in fact, the time to do that is precisely in times like this for an economic crisis because it's been pointed out, the competition for those dollars is more keen now than it's ever been. And the last week, I've been in both Hawaii and Las Vegas, which are two markets where you see tremendous discounting going on. And those are places that are competing with Newport Beach. And so we've got to remain competitive because the cost of not doing that is that we will see a precipitous decline in the revenue that we see through the TOT, and that will manifest itself in service reductions and cuts that we don't want to make. And that's why I think this is an excellent investment, not a cost, as we look at what we're investing to keep the Convention and Visitors Bureau competitive, but not only nationally, but worldwide.
Thank you, Councilman Hen.
Boy, you're still doing the boondoggles, I guess, huh? Hawaii, that's pretty nice.
But on the cheap.
Well, I'd have to say, you know, I sure think it's a reasonable question to ask about the length of the agreement, but on the other hand, I have been impressed by the professionalism, actually, that Gary's brought to this organization, that you really do have a strategic outlook and you do a good job identifying strategy that reaches out several years, and I like that, I like to encourage it. The other aspect of this that I think is significant is that the industry, apparently, the industry players themselves now are stepping up and supplementing, you know, with their own money what's going on here with the city. And I don't think we should lose sight of that, and I kind of like the idea that the industry is tied into a five-year commitment to put their money behind attracting more people, really a lot more of their money because our hotel industry here in the city has really done a tremendous amount of investment in their facilities over the past several years to make themselves more competitive, quite apart from this bid that we're going to be asked to consider. And when you consider the fact that the money that we are paying out here really is sort of self-funding from the perspective of the TOT that's collected. If the TOT goes down, we pay out less, we don't pay out more unless we get more, you know, that kind of thing. It's not like it's a fixed-dollar cost that the city's being asked to pay out. So for all those reasons, I'm comfortable with a five-year time period on this agreement.
Okay, any other questions or Councilman Rosansky?
I'll just weigh in. You know, I guess I, to a certain extent, Gary, I share the mayor's concerns about the three-year agreement because, you know, I was here when we did increase the, you know, we went from sixteen to eighteen percent. The reason being, I don't think you were here at the time, I was a previous director, but it was kind of, the hotels were suffering from nine-eleven, and the revenues were down, and we were trying to give a boost to the industry. Certainly, you know, the times we find ourselves in now are probably even worse than, you know, it's ten nine-elevens. But, and so I am concerned also about the timeframe here because I think at some point, we have to, you know, as we add hotels and we add increased revenues from hotels, and obviously, TOT tax goes up, you know, I guess I question in my mind the direct relationship between a percentage and your, the Visitors Bureau's job. I mean, maybe I'll just throw it out there, or kind of what I'm thinking is like, to market five hotels, is it, does it cost proportionally more to market six hotels than five hotels? Or ten hotels than nine hotels? And so, you know, you get to a point where there's got to be, I guess, you know, economy of scale or whatever, or maybe not, I don't know, or maybe so that you're just going to do more with the money and attract more business. And I think that's kind of the uncertainty that we feel as a council because a lot of it is kind of an investment as opposed to really getting, you know, a bottom-line profit here. We never really know exactly what the bottom line is, what the return on that investment was. We have some ideas, and I know you present a lot of figures and facts to us that hopefully justifies the investment that we're making. And so I think that's the uncertainty that we all feel, is that, you know, do we want to make, how big of an investment do you make, and how much of a return are we getting on our investment, even though, you know, we don't so? You know, it seems like the mood of the council here is to go with the five years, and so I will, I'll say that I guess I'll support that. But with the thought that, you know, should we see a drastic turnaround? And I, unfortunately, I share your pessimism here a little bit, that we're not going to see a drastic, you know, quick turnaround here, and it will be some amount of time before we all are back in the thick of things here. But, so, with that, I'll, I mean, that's kind of my comment. I guess I'll, if you want, I'll make a motion to-
Sure, go ahead.
-approve the recommendations of staff on items one through four.
Second.
Okay. Take public comment on this, Gary, so you can sit down.
Good evening, members of council. My name is Laura Curran. I am glad to see the vigorous discussion on this topic. You know, because I was very concerned with the staff report, there really wasn't any information that would help you determine what were we getting for that six million dollars over five years? I mean, we're being asked to do a contract renewal in advance of receiving the budget report for the budget planning session, and really, it would be hard to see how we're making a decision. So, the gentleman said there's been a lot of success. Well, personally, I'd like to understand better, what is that success? How is that defined? Hotel and occupancy restaurant results could be part of that. How did they improve for Newport Beach in this agreement versus the previous five years if we had a more professional staff? I mean, it's kind of a good question to ask. How do our results go up compared to other like areas, Hawaii, Las Vegas, other destinations? And if we do approve this agreement, how do they plan to address the situation that we're in? I mean, you're bringing up these questions, but before we go ahead and approve it, you know, they are the provider, the only provider that is being considered here. Did we consider other providers? And if not, you know, what are they going to put on the table? So, again, we really deserve a review and a report by the Convention and Visitors Bureau that is part of the staff report for this item. And if it was already done in the study session, then it can be brought forward before any contract is awarded. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one, I'll bring it back to council.
Just an answer to Laura's comment. My recollection is you do put out a report every year where you do provide a number of facts and figures about contacts that you've made, room nights that you believe the Visitors Bureau has, or has resulted as, from Visitor Bureau interactions and contacts. Although it isn't part of this staff report, which maybe it should be, which probably is not a bad idea, I think that you certainly can make it available to Ms. Curran if she wanted to see it. It's a public, yeah, sure, if you would.
As many of you know, we have an annual meeting every year where we do publish an annual report. It is distributed, everyone at the meeting is a public document. If you'd like a copy, we're more than happy to provide that to you. It lists all of our activities, as well as a matrix for our measurement of success, whether it's room night generation, contact with tour operators, working with travel writers, publicity that we've been able to generate. We do offer that. Our measurement, by the way, is established by the hospitality community because they know what they expect of us and what is reasonable and what is most productive from their standpoint. They establish those benchmarks, and I hold myself accountable to them every single month, as I do the Board of Directors, and as many of you know, we added Homer to our Board of Directors, so he gets our reports as well. Thank you.
Yeah, and I would also add that, following up on Gary's comment, that I personally never heard a complaint from any of the hotel operators that the CVB was not doing the job that they felt it should be doing. Certainly, it's, you know, it's their clients, their customers, that are, their guests that are paying this ten percent TOT tax to the city. If they thought that the money was being wasted, I'm sure we would have heard from them. So, you know, to a certain extent, I do trust them because they know their business certainly better than I'm going to know the hotel business or even any of our staff members. And so to the extent that we haven't received complaints, and if anything, only favorable comments, I would, I would, you know, that tends to sway my judgment here.
I guess I had a different, another question, maybe I'm not quite understanding this, but let's say, for example, the, you know, the Pelican Resort generates ten million and sort of the, and Councilman Rosansky kind of touched on it, by what premise do we sort of operate under that generates ten million? So, Visitor Bureau gets one point nine million, you know, what did CVB do to generate that wealth? And, you know, I guess that's what I kind of struggle with, is sort of flat-out, well, everything that gets generated, you get, you know, nineteen, whatever is eighteen, nineteen percent.
Well, that's, I agree. That's the thing that I struggle with, you know, as to how do we gauge, you know, when have we invested enough, is the question. Can you ever invest enough, or is there, you can come back up, Gary, I see you're motioning. Can you ever invest enough? I mean, is there a point where, you know, there's too much? I mean, I know that's a hard question probably to ask of you, but-
Well, you know, you asked a good question about, you know, is there any critical mass that you get when you, you know, receive adequate funding and you can tell your story? I guess the answer would be, it depends on your hotels. The resort at Pelican Hill is unlike any hotel in any other community that I know of, and certainly very unusual in this community, and it demands a certain amount of unique care and feeding that we don't provide to the other hotels. I mentioned at the study session that one of the major reasons we opened up that office in London, in fact, I will tell you about a good ninety percent of it, was because of the impact of the resort at Pelican Hill and their desire of us when we asked them to get that office open. In addition, we planned on adding some public relations support for that, and that's a fairly costly proposition that is driven by the uniqueness of that resort. Now, the other properties are going to stand to benefit, but that resort does have some unique dynamics that we're going to have to attend to. As far as what is the optimal level of funding? I don't really look at it optimal level of funding. I look at what I'm trying to compete against in the marketplace. I know, in fact, you know, what is, what other communities are spending to get our piece of business, mainly Palm Springs, San Diego, Las Vegas, you know, Los Angeles, even Anaheim. And we're going to talk a few moments about, you know, the Business Improvement District and the need to increase the funding to compete against these because they've all created bids, and they've all more than doubled their budget to go after the very same customers that we are. So it's not a matter of what is the optimal level of funding, it's what do you, what do you need in order to compete in the marketplace, so that you can get your voice heard in increasingly noisy marketplace by more aggressive cities? You know, I was going to say this for the bid, but, you know, Dana Point, they just created a bid, and the reason they created the bid is because they said, you know what? There's more competition now in Newport Beach. So the St. Regis, the Ritz-Carlton have said they're going to gang up in order to try to get more business from Newport Beach. So, you know, it, I'm not really looking at it as trying to build an empire here. I'm trying to stay competitive against cities that are spending more to get our money. Palm Springs more than doubled their budget. San Diego is going from eleven million dollars to twenty-five million dollars. Same with San Francisco, to go after the same customers we are. Now granted, they have a convention- a convention center, they're going after some different customers, I grant you, but many of those customers are the same ones that we're trying to get to meet here. So to me, it's strictly a competitiveness issue, and frankly, that is the only reason why this bid is even being presented to you, is not because we need more money just for more money, it's, we have to, we have to do it for our own survival, and that's why the hotels are ponying it up.
I have to add just one other quick comment. You know, the city's, city staff has been engaged in a benchmarking project here, working in conjunction with the Finance Committee to try and define and better measure our performance, and use that information to perform better over time. And I'd have to say, I was pretty impressed with the approach that the CVB uses, which in fact was a fairly robust benchmarking approach to their performance, to have hard measures and track them over time and report how they did. And so, I do feel pretty good about that, and it gives me a better sense of comfort here, and playing to Laura's point about measurement and outcomes, I think we do have a good basis to form judgments about that here, that you've put together, granted, in just the last couple of years, really. I think you've assembled all of that, but it should perform a good base over time to help measure how well you're doing.
Okay, there are no further comments. Please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, next item is request to form a Tourism Business Improvement District under the 1994 bid law. Yeah, does this, anyone in the council feel compelled for a lengthy report?
No.
I think we kind of...
I think we should have probably combined the two anyway.
Well, that was Councilman Webb's suggestion after we already got into it.
I'll second that.
Okay, I don't even think we need a report.
I did have one question. This is more for Gary than I think Lee, but maybe whoever answers it. Why isn't Pelican Hill in your bid?
The Irvine Company properties right now have, due to the opening at Pelican Hill, have opted not to be a part of the bid at this moment. However, they have requested a meeting to talk about it with us later this week. The other hotels, the other six hotels, want the Irvine Company hotels to be a part of this bid. They are going to incentivize them to become a part of this bid, and it is our intent to hopefully get them to be a part of this at some time. But while the Irvine Company was making that decision, the other hotels felt that the time was now, because we need to act now, but for all the reasons we've discussed tonight, so they wanted to move ahead.
Okay, any other questions? Anyone from the public want to address the council on this?
Good evening, members of council. I'm Laura Curran. Okay, so on this bid, I had a chance to look through it and ask myself, you know, why do we care? Because we do want tourism to remain strong in Newport, and these hotels are all relevant. In fact, I've put events into several of these hotels and paid the occupancy tax for probably 150 room nights combined over the years. So, first of all, you know, I think it's, to say that the hotels are ponying up this tax concerns me, because this is a tax that the visitors are paying. If you look at page three of the report, it says, "It is the proponents' plan to pass the assessment along to the public as a surcharge on their room nights." So that's an additional two percent tax that we're adding to the bill of anybody who stays in a hotel in Newport Beach. So I think we should be clear about that. It's not the hotels taking money out of their marketing budget and putting it towards the CVB. Secondly, when we look at the need, the question I would have is, how much does each of these hotels generate? How confident are we that marketing will have an impact? You know, and that goes to what activities are they going to do that will have an impact? And I heard some of that tonight, but it would be nice to see more of that in the report. And then when we look at the report, and since this item's going to come up for public hearing, we have the opportunity to look through some of these items in the public hearing. The city's estimate in the staff report says that it will generate, the bid would generate 1.7 million dollars per year. However, that's on page, that's in the report. On page nine of the report, it says, the CVB's estimate says 2.3 million per year. So, I saw 1.7 three times, 2.3 once, so there's some disconnect in the numbers potentially. The expense budget is 1.7 million. So, the next question is, 1.7 million, I saw four line items, but no distribution, any sense of how those line, those line items would be distributed. 1.7 million dollars is a lot of money. Are we getting people? Are we getting collateral? Are we outsourcing to get that material? What's that money for? You know, I think it would be a good question to ask. So then also, if you look at this, how much money do these hotels already get through the CVB, which goes to what percentage of revenue do these hotels generate in our overall city tourism budget versus the total hotel, total occupancy tax? So, you know, we're going to dedicate 1.7 million to, of additional tax from this project. How much are these guys already getting from the 6 million that has been generated over the last five years through to the CVB? And if it's a significant amount, will the amount they're already getting be reallocated to other hotels? Because if I were another hotel, I'd say they're going to be creating their own bid, getting a lot of money on top of what they already get. Do they need the other money that's coming in, or do we need to continue to provide 18%? So there's some question there about the interaction. So, to me, those are all relevant questions that we should be considering and looking at as we come up in the public hearing, because honestly, you know, this is a tax, this is additional fees, these are all hotels that are part of national chains, and they all have opportunities for marketing budgets. And before we add a tax and engage more on, with these hotels, we need to understand what that really means. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one, I'll bring it back to council. Okay, please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, next item is number 17, Amendment to Nuisance Abatement Ordinance to Provide for Recovery of Attorney's Fees and Cost in Nuisance Abatement Actions.
You heard this two weeks ago. My apologies, I missed an issue with respect to the nuisance abatement, recovery of attorney's fees. We've explained the error that I made with respect to recovery of costs and the reciprocal nature of it. We redrafted the ordinance to be consistent with the 2007 case that I had missed, and I recommend that you adopt this ordinance for first reading and pass it on to second reading in two weeks.
So this provides that the prevailing party will get attorney's fees?
Yes, it's expressly so, and my assumption, based upon past experience in this type of litigation and contract, would be that the courts would actually interpret a non-pervailing party clause as a prevailing party clause. And a case came down in 2007, which I missed interpreting them in a way that found them to be unenforceable, which is what we don't want to have happen. We put a, put some protections into the statute that are consistent, the ordinance, that's consistent with the government code, allowing the other side not to collect more than what we actually incur, and to not collect any funds if we do not seek them. So, we're protected as best we can be. This does provide prevailing attorney's fees, and in many other circumstances, in fact, defendants would be entitled to it anyway, so it just basically levels the playing field.
I'll move the item.
Second.
Anyone from the public want to comment? Seeing no one, bring it back, please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, item 18, Formation of Ad-Hoc Committee for Negotiating the Connection and Cold Development Agreements. I entertain a motion to move that off calendar.
Move to continue. Take it off, off calendar, take it off calendar.
Okay, anyone from the public want to comment? Seeing no one, please vote.
Motion carries.
Madam Clerk?
Motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council at either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made by only, only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Any motions for reconsideration?
Wait before you. I think there was a theme tonight about some of the staff reports, and, I mean, I know it's easy for us. When I pull something, I pull it because I have a question. I know I could call staff, but I figure if I've got a question, somebody in the public has a question. And so, I mean, I don't want to make it voluminous, and I know what pressure staff is under doing this every two weeks, but a couple of things. I mean, as soon as someone stood up, my questions were answered, and it could have been in the report, so I hope we'll be a little bit more careful.
I apologize for that, but I think what struck me tonight, at least with me, is the busyness of the thing means it's not getting the scrutiny that it used to get and that it should get, so I need to find a way to deal with that, and I apologize for it.
Well, I thought with undergrounding utility, I thought there were some very legitimate concerns and a good discussion, and we're going to get it addressed, so I think that's okay.
Okay.
We got there?
But I'm also concerned that, I'm not necessarily certain that we need to have the really thick documents of reports going along with it, because our package already is almost overwhelming, and those particular studies I think we've done and heard information on at other times, and so we don't need to repeat all that.
No, I agree. I don't want it, but I just think sometimes the language was a little bit careless and could have been tightened up, and a
Yes.
couple of questions answered that would have made it much more clear.
My pet peeve with a lot of projects that Public Works puts out is they need to have a sketch, so I can see where it is.
Okay, seeing no further comments, we're adjourned.